Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Committee on Council. My name is Liliana Bakhtiari. I am the chair, and I am joined by my fellow colleagues today, starting to my left, Vice Chair, Councilmember Byron Amos, followed by Councilmember Jason Winston, Councilmember Amir Faroki, and to my right, Councilmember Howard Shook and Councilmember Andrea Boone. This does constitute a quorum. So first moved is to adopt the agenda. I will make that motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Winston. Vote is now open.
Vote is closed.
Five yays, zero nays. This does pass. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. I move to adopt. Do I have a second? Seconded again by Councilmember Winston.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Six yays, zero nays. This does pass. Next is the 2024 Committee on Council Goals and Objectives. Vice Chair Amos and I will be meeting this week to go through and finalize those. So please submit them this week if you can. We will be finalizing those at our very next meeting. So please, again, get that into our analyst, Mr. Overton over there, so that we can get those formally solidified and adopted. And next, we have the adoption of the full council agenda. I'll go ahead and make that motion again. Seconded by Councilmember Faroki. Let's please open that vote.
Vote is open.
Six yays, zero nays. This passes. Next, we have public comment. Again, everyone gets three minutes. I'll let you know when we hit the 30-second mark, or I'll gently whisper into the mic to let you know you have 30 seconds left. But yes, everyone does have three minutes. And the first person up truly needs no introduction. Marissa Pyle. Oh, hang on, Marissa. Let me actually turn that on.
I think it's... Yeah, there we go. Hi, everybody. My name is Marissa Pyle. I'm a resident of DeKalb County, just outside the city of Atlanta. Déjà vu all over again. We're here like we have been so many other weeks in a row, trying to get this body to support democracy. This legislation, that's the very last item on the agenda today, endorsed by almost 30 orgs across Georgia. You're talking organizations like New Georgia Project, Working Families Party, others who were maybe familiar to you because they were instrumental in your own elections, and national leaders like Mark Elias, the leading voting rights litigator in the entire country. If I had to guess, this meeting today is going to go something like this. The bill gets read. Everybody says how much they want to move it. The law office is going to chime in with a vague concern. It's not going to cite a code section. It's a specific part of the bill, the same way they've done every single other time. And then you will have a choice. You can either legislate based off of nonspecific legal vibes, or you can actually have a spine for the voters that you represent. How much more clear can we make it that no matter how hard you work on this, how many weeks it takes, that at the last moment, there will always be some nonspecific objection that will hold it up? You're not five. We're not novices. You're not novices. We've all been here before. You don't pretend that you don't see what's happening. The only question is if you're going to use it as cover or you're going to see it as bullying, which is what it actually is. Let's just get this done, y'all. We are doing this. We are here because we care about the people. We care about our city. We care about democracy. It's time. Stop hiding behind the mayor. No more last-second changes. No more last-second substitutes. No more changes. No more deals. Just get this through. It's 2024. We are about to ask voters in this city to decide the fate of the nation again. I'm a Georgia voter. Before this, I was already tired because we keep having elections, and they keep being the elections that decide the fate of the country. How are you going to tell voters that their voices matter after this? How are you going to ask them to show up for you? How are you going to ask the same organizations that are sitting here, sitting here being ignored every single week, to show up and put the same money and tired and energy into this fight for a process that the leading paper in the state has found already has 80% bipartisan support? This is it, y'all. No more second chances. Just pass it. Please, just let's get this done.
Thank you. Next, we have Tim Franzen.
Morning, y'all. Tim Franzen with American Friends Service Committee. Oh, I counted for two minutes. I get three in here. What am I going to say? I know y'all's inbox is already filled. And so almost nothing I could add to what I already know is filled up in the inboxes, all the points. And, you know, clearly, this doesn't violate any law or statute. You're not required to use signature match. It just comes down to democracy or chaos. Which one do you support? At the bottom line, that's what this is. Y'all make decisions all the time that I don't agree with. But I don't... We're not in a dictatorship. Something comes up for a vote, and I vote one way, and sometimes I get my way. Sometimes I don't. That's how it works, right? That's how it's supposed to work. I'm imagining all y'all's heads nodding right now. Because, you know, I imagine... You know, that's how it's supposed to work. And so today, this isn't even about a public safety center. This is about the, you know, democracy. Does it work or not? And there's a lot of eyes on us, on y'all, on Atlanta. You know, does democracy work? And, you know, I could have just come up and said what she said. Because you said everything that, you know, the whole country is looking at Atlanta. I get 15 emails a day directly from Joe Biden. Anybody getting emails directly? Right from him. I need 15 more bucks. And I've come up with my own response to all of these emails and text messages, regardless of what direction or organization they're coming from. Not one more dollar. Not one more vote. Not one more volunteer hour until this thing gets on the ballot. I mean, if democracy doesn't... Let's find out if democracy works right here. Here's the line. This is the line. It's around this referendum. Does it work? If it doesn't, not one more dollar. Not one... For any of y'all or any of the Democrat overlords, not one more dollar, not one more minute of my time. And what a shitty thing to have to be doing right now with what's at stake. I mean, we got Genocide Joe or End of Democracy. Those are our two candidates. End of Democracy or, you know, terrible genocide war. And, you know, this is a time for voter engagement. This is a time that we should get involved. And instead, this process has repelled tens and thousands of folks from the democratic process, tens and thousands of Atlantans who have lost faith in this process. Today, we have the opportunity to turn that ship around, to start healing as a community. And it's got to get through this committee first. And I have faith with all the disappointment that today, we're going to see this thing pass through, and we're going to begin a healing process. And it's on y'all. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stephanie Ali.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. My name is Stephanie Ali. I am the Policy Director for New Georgia Project and New Georgia Project Action Fund. We know voter engagement. In any given year, we can knock up to 4 million doors, and we have done that. 4 million doors in the state of Georgia. So we know what voters are talking about across the state. We also know, like Marissa said, that voters are tired of voting, except in this instance. I have never, in 14 years of doing this work, seen people just beg for an election like they're doing now. So on behalf of NGPAF and our 30 co-signers, I want to read into the record a letter that you would have received a couple weeks ago in support of this legislation. So as leading voting rights organizations in Atlanta and in the state of Georgia, we strongly support legislation proposed by Councilperson Bakhtiari in partnership with the Cop City Referendum Coalition. This legislation is long overdue and paves the way for a true democratic input on critical issues in the city of Atlanta. This historic referendum, for which organizers gathered over 116,000 signatures, represents the first use of the referendum process in Georgia's capital city, a key moment where our leaders must choose to set a positive precedent for the right to vote in Atlanta and across the state. This legislation, following best-practice standards from municipalities across the state and constructed by leading litigators in the voting rights and election law space, would set clear, fair, and deeply important standards for the handling of referendums in Atlanta, both to date and moving forward. This also provides a key opportunity for Atlanta to serve as a model for other municipalities statewide, upholding these standards and having them as a benchmark for other local governments who seek to build a referendum process. As democracy remains under threats through anti-voting legislation, election subversion tactics, and individual bad actors, it's essential to codify strong pro-voter policies, such as this, and explicitly protect direct democracy. Referendums, an increasingly common way for communities to safeguard reproductive freedom, access to health care, and other key policies, are coming under attack from state legislatures. These threats must not be amplified by a failure to act in this pivotal circumstance. In advance of the 2024 elections, and I'll add 2025 elections, voters must see our elected leaders taking steps to uphold democracy and advance our freedom to vote in order to maintain collective trust. So our work as organizations takes place at every level of government in Georgia, from county elections boards to federal advocacy. This legislation represents one of the most prominent opportunities for progress in our state. If council fails to act, it will do a severe blow to our trust in government, willingness to participate in democracy, and faith in our elections. We urge you to vote in favor today.
Thank you. Next, we have TT.
Hey, how are everybody doing? First, I want to say, I don't know why y'all sit in office and pretend like everything y'all do is okay because it's not. I'm tired of seeing these people, my people, struggle for the things that y'all do that y'all think that is right. It's not. It's not. So I have a poem that I just made that I would like to read. I can't breathe without the life tree. Hoping for hope, wishing things get better. Say all of this hate is turning me sour. Tired of seeing my people dying because of something your police don't like. Without those badges and uniforms, who are really behind it all?
Thank you, TT. Next, we have Alex. And I cannot see her... I want to say... There you go. You know. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, if so many of your constituents disagree with something you're doing, shouldn't you want to hear what they think? Like, who is the government for if not the people living under it? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Joanna Burnett.
I'm here for the referendum. We tried... We tried a petition. You can't silence us. Stop Cop City. As a chaplain, our supervisor once asked us to make a symbol of our work experience. And my symbol was that of tears. And today are tears of my soul because I am here to defend the forest. The climate is speaking for itself because we see the climate change every day. The hurricanes, the storms, the floods, the volcanoes and sinkholes coming into the earth. We need to say to Mayor Dickens, stop environmental racism because we want the earth to be here. I'm here also to defend the earth. Thank you.
Thank you. James Johnson.
Hello, city council members. My name is James Johnson, and I'm a policy associate at the Asian American Advocacy Fund, a grassroots organization with a mission to uplift the voices of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders in Georgia. I'm also a resident of District 3. I urge this committee to vote favorably on the referendum process legislation introduced by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Today, I stand before you to reinforce the sentiment of the 80% of Georgia voters who fervently support protecting the right to a referendum process, as revealed by recent HAC poll. Our communities have seen democracy under attack, and they wish to see strong pro-voter policies codified. So this legislation proposed by Councilmember Bakhtiari is wildly popular with voters because voters know that it paves the way for protecting democratic input on key issues in the city of Atlanta. Further, this legislation is not just popular. It is meticulously crafted, drawing upon national best practices and the expertise of respected litigators in the voting rights and election law arena. The legislation proposed by Councilmember Bakhtiari would set clear, transparent, fair, and legal standards for the handling of referendums in Atlanta. In contrast, alternate or alternative proposals lack the depth of community and legal scrutiny that this legislation has undergone. Initiatives like signature matching, discussed in last month's committee meeting, only introduce unwarranted bias, disproportionately affecting marginalized electors. Our communities have endured a loss of trust due to past incidents of suppression and intimidation, exemplified by last September's comment telling Asian-American constituents to go back to where they came from, and the recent use of non-potable water against protesters. However, passing this legislation in its original form and starting the signature count for ballot placement signifies a crucial first step in rebuilding that trust. In order to achieve progress in our state and rebuild faith in democracy, it is imperative that this committee votes favorably on this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb Kahn. And I apologize if I mispronounced your last name.
Right, perfectly. Hi, I'm Deb Kahn. I wrote some things, so I don't meander too much. So I've been thinking quite a bit about what I want to say to y'all. I waver between anger and dismay. I went out seven days a week during the blistering heat collecting signatures. Probably 800,000 people, some of them pro-Cop City people, who would walk with me on the Belt Line, and we'd talk. And they'd ultimately get probably tired of me talking to them and say, "I'll sign." But for every person I spoke to, and they came up to me, I had to sign. I didn't approach them. There was at least one person who either wasn't registered in time or wasn't registered at all, who I directed to how to register, who were very excited about this being brought to a vote. They wanted to have a chance to vote on this. And there were over, you know, probably 818,000 people who signed the petition. Yes, some of those may have been out of district. Well, that'll all be figured out when we go look at that. But that shows the enthusiasm for people for this particular referendum. And we followed all the rules. We got the referendum approved. And it seems like this city has been so sneaky and disingenuous with all of the actions related to this referendum. Something would happen like, you know, the signature thing, and then all of a sudden, I'd have more people come up to me and say, "I never was going to sign, but I want to sign now." Or when people were the RICO thing against people helping with bail. I had some guy at Aurora Parking Lot come up to me and go, "I was never going to think about this, but I want to sign now." You guys have brought people to this cause. And we have this incredible coalition of groups that have worked together on this referendum. We're not going to disappear. You should really do the right thing. And one thing to know is that very engaged volunteers and donors are turning away from this party. Those of us who campaigned for the mayor, I did, Senators Ossoff, Warnock, and the president are going to take a pass these coming elections. And honestly, you should be excited that people are engaged and want to be involved in our city. And I don't want you to be ultimately remembered as a city council that destroyed the Democratic Party in this state. Because this is huge, guys. You just need to bring it to a vote. You... Cop City may still win, but bring it to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Vanessa Ward.
Me again. I'm kind of nervous. I can talk now?
Make sure they can hear you.
Okay. Okay. My name is Vanessa. And my signature is on the very first petition. Because I stand for good trouble. And I wanted to say some names, like John Lewis, Jose Williams, Dr. King, Ralph Davis, Jesse Jackson, Joseph Lowey, Rosa Parks, Fannie Lewis, and Toldman.
You got it.
And I know that Atlanta is the birthplace for civil rights. And so there haven't been any mistakes so far. So I wanted the people to be able to decide if they want to put it on a ballot for people to vote. Because, see, when we put it on a ballot and we decide to vote, we can stop the... We can see the change from the water holes to the... From the... So the bullets won't come and people being shot in their heads. And the medical facility can stop with the injections of those fake things that they putting in people now and stuff. And we won't have to see no more goon squads. And we won't see people like Tyree Nichols die. I think before a militant is placed, we need training on racism, anger, profiling. We need love on our streets, not blood.
Thank you, Vanessa. You were great. Rohit Mahalcha.
This is your job. It's not my job. This is deeply, deeply personal for me. It's emotional watching how many people have come out to just have a conversation with you about democracy. I got into this work, similar to many of you, because of how scared my parents were of government, the harm that it does to families like mine. And I told them that I could make it better, that I'd fight for that to happen. So I'm here stubbornly, partially because I want my parents to be wrong and also because I want y'all to get this right. For over six months, a group of us have come to this body to create a clear and transparent... to create a clear and transparent process for how direct democracy is supposed to work. And in a time like now, when basic civil and human rights are under attack, this is critical. And this committee must move to codify these processes, not in feelings or vibes, but in law. And before anyone says, "Why now?" I want to make sure that we read in the process of how we got here in the first place. Council initially said that they would create a process when this entire referendum started. They didn't. Then they said the clerk would create a process. They didn't. Then they said a special clerk would be brought in to create a process. They didn't. And six months ago, we said, "Fine. We'll create a process." And we did. We brought together local and national experts to be able to create a constitutional and fair process that we can all agree upon. And in October and November, when we first gave that to y'all, we were threatened and intimidated on what would happen if we tried to read that in. The second time, said, "It's not ready. It needs work." The third time, it was a constitutional issue. And the fourth time, four minutes before this meeting started last time, a substitute ordinance was introduced that no one even had time to read, that reintroduced signature matching into the process. So, this is it. We have solved the constitutional issues. If there is another constitutional issue, solve it here. Agree upon it. Do not leave today without resolve. I remind you, this is not an election. But I also remind you that there will be one in 2025. And this is not a vote for or against a training facility. It's also not a vote for or against policing. This is a vote for or against democracy. And yesterday, people on this body were celebrating that the world will come to the home of King and Lewis to learn about who we are. So, quite literally, the whole world is watching.
Thank you. Kriya Bunson? Brunson?
Hello, how are y'all doing today? I stayed, you know, where the Wendy's was that got burned down due to the situation of Rashad Brooks. I stayed in that neighborhood, which is the Pittsburgh neighborhood. I've lived in Atlanta all my life, 45 years. And I've seen some things. First of all, our kids. We, like, I'm a member of the Private Industry Council, which was called PIG, which was a summer program that our kids had, where they worked at our recreation centers. A lot of our employers hired our kids, and they got paid a decent wage to stay out the streets. When kids stay out the streets and they have something to do, they're not bothered by the police. Not at all. Because they are being productive citizens. And our kids are our future. But how can we protect our future if we're killing our future? Next is our elderly. Let's not put them out in the streets in the cold. Let's make sure they always have somewhere to go. Let's make sure that healthcare is number one. Let's make sure that our communities are loved, not destroyed. Let's make sure our people are protected, not destroyed. This is Atlanta. Let's keep it the way it's supposed to be, proud and free. Free of destruction. Let's keep our city, our city. Let's make it number one, and let it stay that way on a positive note. So, let's just do all we can to keep our city the way it's supposed to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Giovanni Serrano.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Giovanni Serrano, committee organizer with the Georgia Latino Alliance for Human Rights. We have been working on the ground for more than 20 years, you know, mobilizing, educating the Latinx community here in the state of Georgia. And today, my biggest question is, why are we still refusing to process 160,000 signatures for the Cop City referendum? Ordinance 34482 is doing democracy right. To formulate a transparent, fair process for the current and future referendums is what democracy looks like. The creation of Cop City around the United States, the criminalization of protests here in our Georgia Capitol, I don't even know. Maybe in a few months, you guys are going to see me in jail because of my speaking against genocide that is taking place. And something that I learned too as well is that we have been conditioned. If something is not illegal, we make it illegal so we can criminalize more people. So, this, for me, is just a sign of the beginning of a fascist regime. A regime that is losing the people's trust and our political process and into our elected officials, who we, the people, we, the people, gave you power to represent us. You don't have the power. We have the power. We decided to let you borrow it to make decisions for us, to make the right decisions for the people. We asked you, and we ask also that you vote forward for this ordinance. Also, in addition, Georgia law does not require a signature matching, and the city of Atlanta should not. And also, I can bet you that not a single one of you can do a signature the same way every time. And for me, I didn't even know how to make a signature until I started college. So, like, you know, let's be serious about it. Not everybody can make a signature. It also depends on the education that we receive and the lack of education that many of our schools have, that we should be investing, instead of divesting so much money to a center to train police, right? Also, using this updated procedure is absurd. Let us not forget that Cop City will lead to the further criminalization of black and brown bodies, which will eliminate their voting power and create free labor for many of the corporations that support Cop City, right? So, and we cannot still be here believing that many of the people that have been criminalized are, you know, are terrible people. We know that at some point, that crime was not being criminalized. Right now, we have more than 30 crimes that potentially be included in cash bail. So, poor people will be in jail for many years here at the Georgia Capitol. So, we don't want Cop City. We want investment in the community, knowing agencies that will further criminalize our bodies. So, we ask you to do the right way and protect democracy by passing this ordinance forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cole Bennett.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Cole Bennett. I come to you today as a representative of Move to Amend and other political organizations, my neighbors and community in Virginia Highlands, and my fellow... and my peers and fellow students at the Georgia State University College of Law. It is well evident why the majority of people have showed up today to participate in the political process. And I find that incredibly inspiring. I'm incredibly disappointed, however, that the powers that be are trying to block the inevitable wave of democracy at every step of the way, including this meeting today. We call on you, our elected representatives, to represent the will of the people and allow us a voice in the issues that affect us, and allow us to vote on the Cop City development. There are people here today that have more eloquent and poignant things to say, so I will keep this brief. I would just like to remind everyone in this room what it is this whole political song and dance we do is all about, and who it is that you, our city council members, allegedly are supposed to work for. Let's not beat around the bush, do the right thing, and more than that, do your job. We strongly urge you to vote in favor. Thank you.
I keep doing that to myself. Thank you very much. Next is Angela. And Angela, forgive me. I'm going to try to say this. Raphael? Okay.
My name is Angela Raphael, and I'm a resident of Atlanta in the Sweet Auburn neighborhood. I come to speak to you all today as a law student, as a student leader and organizer, and as hopefully one day, a leader in my community the way that you are now. I'm here on behalf of Law School Democrats of America, the Black Law Students Association, American Constitution Society, People's Parity Project, and all the other students at Georgia State University who believe strongly that this referendum regarding the police training center should be on the ballot and for the people to decide. I grew up learning the ideals of community, leadership, politics, and government. I grew up with the lesson that power should be derived from the government, and our political leaders work for us. As the people we elected, is it not your job to represent us and carry out our will? Is it not your job to be represented, to be a representation of our will? I ask you, what are you so afraid of that it's become such a burden on you to hear the people's will? You already know exactly what we want, and you know how much we don't want Cop City, a gross misuse of the tax dollars we pay and have had no representation over. If you're not working for us, who are you working for? I can only imagine how much violence and crime we could prevent if we spent $109 million on services to take care of our community instead of training city employees to have urban warfare against us. Please pass this legislation.
Angela, thank you. Next, we have Michael. Michael, you are going to have to teach me how to... Chikowski, okay, there you go. Chikowski, thank you.
Hello? Hi, I'm Michael. I am a resident of the city of Atlanta. And I'm here today to say that democracy isn't just a series of rules and regulations that the people have as their only avenue to force you to hear them. Forming this thin series of channels, modified by legal concerns and surrounded on all sides by arrest, violence, legal complication, it's a frail thing. And instead, we need to remember that democracy is a principle in which the people have their voices heard. And so, I've never spoken to this council before, so all I'll relay today is what I learned from gathering signatures for the recent referendum. And I learned the most from the people who chose not to sign. Because those people were not choosing not to sign, for the most part, because they so desired there to be this police construction project. They weren't signing for one of two reasons. It was, one, that they did not trust the piece of paper in the system that would hold their information. They were scared of that. Or, two, they simply did not think that it would make a difference. They were so discouraged that any of their voices would be heard that they would not stop for a minute on the street to sign a piece of paper because they thought it was that futile. As a resident of this city, I see it. And what I see is that the people, the longer that we wait to have them heard, the longer that their voices aren't heard, the more that they go silent, and the more that you will not hear them. And that is the way in which this process is crushing democracy. This needs to be passed today. This needs to be passed today. This needs to be passed today. We know that you have the power to set a referendum. We are aware of that. The time is now. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ann Moni.
Committee members, my name is Ann Moni. I've lived in the Lake Clair neighborhood of Atlanta since 1969. Being as old as I am means I was an active voter when Maynard Jackson became vice mayor in 1970, three years before being elected mayor. Over these 50-plus years, I've been proud to be a participating citizen as Atlanta developed from a largely segregated city into a much more democratic, cosmopolitan city. During my career and education, I was able to study the history of Atlanta's evolving democracy, which is relevant to the question before you today. Will the Atlanta City Council go on record as advocating a democratic procedure ensuring citizen input on a city project of vital importance? The historical example I'll give provides a challenge. Will you live up to the model set by those who expanded democracy in Atlanta within their segregated city decades before African-Americans got full voting rights in 1965? After the Civil War, when the city established public high schools for white students, it ignored the black community. Led by the local NAACP, the black community effectively used one tool available, the right to vote on bond issues for city development. After working for five years, they won approval for a black community high school, a major expansion of democracy in Atlanta, leading to the opening of Booker T. Washington High School in 1924. I read the Atlanta Journal-Constitution. I know the commitment of the mayor and Atlanta's major players to build a new training center as presently conceived. But are their votes the only votes that count? Not if we have a functioning democracy. Will you, representing me and all Atlanta citizens, pass an ordinance outlining a procedure affirming the city's commitment to democracy? Will you live up to the tradition of those in Atlanta who expanded democracy under much harsher conditions? Let it be said that you did live up to this democratic tradition by passing Ordinance 34482. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Next, we have Jacqueline Echols.
Good morning. I'm back again. I know a lot of you are tired of seeing us, but the fact is, if we don't show up, then you hold that against us as well. So, here we are. Again today, again, my name is Jacqueline Echols, and I'm speaking as a citizen of Atlanta. So, again today, I am speaking to you as a citizen of Atlanta who votes and will have the right to vote on the police training facility, also known as Cop City referendum. Ordinance 34482 would put in place a process necessary for validating petitions collected in support of referenda now and in the future. The ordinance does not violate state law. The ordinance does not interfere with a pending Court of Appeals case. And Georgia law does not require signature match, and neither should the city of Atlanta. Two weeks ago, the mayor, through a substitute ordinance proposed by Councilman Shook, attempted to include signature matching as part of the validation process. Shamefully, this is the same tactic used almost four years ago that resulted in thousands of citizens being purged from the state's voter rolls to prevent them from voting. Why? To influence the outcome of that election a ploy to disenfranchise voters that Mayor Dickens railed against then, but now supports. Why is the mayor so afraid of letting citizens vote? It is not because he thinks the referendum will fail, but because he fears if citizens are given the opportunity to vote, he will lose and the referendum will pass. 116,000 citizens have signed a petition demanding that their voices be heard, that they be allowed to speak for themselves. City council members, this body members, do the right thing. Pass Ordinance 34482 and let the citizens decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Casey Sharp.
All right, hello, friends. So let's just be real with each other for a moment. You all are political nerds, total political nerds. And I say this as a compliment. I love hanging around political nerds. I've been hanging around in the different Democratic Party organizations for a very long time. And if any of you had gone to the two referendum organizing offices, because you've all been involved in plenty of campaigns before. We know this, your own and those of your colleagues and others, people who have sought higher offices than yourselves. If you had been around these referendum offices, you would have seen an energy unlike you would ever believe. Any local campaign would have envied to have half the energy in organization that was in these referendum offices over the course of many months. These are the people you want in your campaigns. These are the people you want knocking doors later on for Ossoff, for Warnock. You want people to come back and hold their nose for Biden with all of our problems. These are the people that you need. The Venn diagram of the engaged citizens who will work Metro Atlanta and keep this state purple at all, the Venn diagram of those people and the people who worked on the referendum is a single overlapping circle. You need us. And guys, we should be friends. We should be getting along on this. You notice, I'm not even talking about Cop City. There's this ridiculous point that the city is putting out saying, well, it's 70% done. That's a total lie. You could walk by there and see the gaping hole in the park and our forest that they destroyed. But you know what? I'm an archaeologist down the private sector. I do history and that land has been abused before. It can be just fine again. It was abused back in the day when the city literally changed the law to be able to build a Jim Crow prison farm to imprison and kill black people because they could not legally do it inside Atlanta. So that's why you have control of this property where the citizens around it have no vote whatsoever on city council. So we're here saying we're the engaged citizens that you want. Just send this along. And you know what? For someone like me, and I know there are people in this room who disagree with me, but if this gets on the ballot and our measure on the referendum loses, I wash my hands of this. I'm done. I'm tired of it. But you know what? Just put this through. Put it on the ballot. Stop this sadism of putting yourselves through this. Because honestly, Andre should be here being yelled at, not all of you. And also say this. I know that a number of you, and some of whom aren't sitting here right now, are sympathetic with the council member who supported this, who presented this piece of legislation. And you need to stop putting all of this on CM Bakhtiari. You really need to stop. Please, some of you I know are sympathetic. Step up and help a little bit. And if people are, in some ways, thinking they might spite their district because of what they're supporting, know that CM Bakhtiari's district signed this petition like crazy and we have the data, we can break it down for you. So guys, you're spending 1.1 million of our money in court right now fighting us. So I see all these posts about other things that cities are doing that is good. It's couch change compared to what you're doing fighting us and that's not even the cost of the thing. Just put this through. Put it on the ballot. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Deborah Kazito.
Hi. My name is Deborah Kazito and I'm a citizen of Atlanta and work in the field of mental health. I am here today to let you know that I don't want Cop City to be built and I wish to vote on the referendum as I deserved to. I don't want Cop City to be built because I care about the environment and I care about the community that exists near Cop City. There has already been flooding in the area where Cop City is being constructed and individuals in the surrounding community are already starting to be hounded by police monitoring the area. The community of Atlanta deserves to live in a safe space, with safe space with its forests intact. I believe in this so strongly that I also attend peaceful protests outside Cop City. At our most recent protest, I and my comrades were sprayed with non-potable water by a truck from the construction site. And instead of defending us or coming to see if we were all right, the police maintained their positions and left. Stop Cop City. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Harris.
Howdy, everyone. I'm actually going to address some things that I've received in my email from many people who have been so gracious to respond to the hundreds, if not thousands, of emails you've probably received over the last week. And a few of those people are not in this room but have repeatedly pointed to things that we've heard in this room, the illegality of this ordinance. And I am not a lawyer, but I've spent a lot of time talking with lawyers and experts of law and community members and the people who have worked on this ordinance and the referendum. And illegal means that harm is being done. There may be concerns about constitutional discrepancies between this language and the 11th Circuit, but that is not what we are here to litigate today. We are here to codify rules that many of you have said you agree we need. And so before we move to what you guys think, I wanted to ask the law department, who do you work for? Do you work for the mayor? Do you work for the city government? Do you work for the city council? All of those people have been put in their positions of authority because of us. So I would say you work for us. And at the very least, you work for them. And it gives me some consternation that you would interrupt them in their operations to point out things that are beyond what a normal legal counsel would do. That seems like a politicization of a legal process. And that is very anti-democratic. What I would like to remind everyone is that this referendum, from the very beginning, included every rule you needed to know on the paper. The home rule delegates the power of referendum to the city. The city charter, which was approved by the state government, creates the need for an ordinance dictating the initiation and validation of referendums in the city charter.
30 seconds.
All that this does is tie up the knot nice and easy. If you have questions about specific language, you have had two months to review and to correct them. I hope that we can come to an agreement today, pass this through committee on council, pass it through full council. Get this done. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. This does conclude our public comment. So we will proceed to our legislative agenda. First, we have communications. Mr. Overton, will you go ahead and sign off, sound off item number one?
Yes, sorry about that. Item number one, 23C-5121, a communication from Tony Roberts, Executive Director of the Atlanta Bar Association, submitting the appointment of Ms. Andrea Bilbidea to serve on the Atlanta Citizens Review Board, filling the unexpired term of Mr. Keith Hayson. This term will expire on August 19, 2024.
Thank you. This appointee already appeared before PSLA, correct? So we're clear to go ahead and vote?
Yes.
All right, so I motion to approve. Seconded by Councilmember Faroki. Let's please open that vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Four yays, zero nays. This does pass. I'm sorry, four yays and one nay. This does pass. And we will move on to item number two.
Item number two, 24C-5008, a communication from Council President Doug Shipman, reappointing Mr. Derek George to serve as a member of the Water and Sewer Opinions Board. This appointment is for a term of two years.
Thank you. This appointee already appeared before city utilities. Do I have a motion? Moved by Councilmember Faroki, seconded by Councilmember Amos. Let's please open that vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five yays, zero nays. Five yays, zero nays. This does pass. We're on to item number three. Please sound that caption.
Item number three, 24-C-5010, a communication from Councilmember Dustin Hillis, appointing Ms. Joanna Powell to serve as a member of the Atlanta Commission on Women. This appointment is for a term of two years.
Thank you. I believe that Ms. Powell is here. There she is. Hi. Ms. Powell, thank you so much. Well, yes, please come approach the mic. Would love to hear about what you, why you would like to serve and also thank you for putting yourself up for this position.
Hi, everyone. My name is Joanna Powell and I work in the public health sector. So I think it would be great to collaborate with this commission to make an impact on what they are currently doing.
Any questions, general remarks? All right, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Winston. I will go ahead and second. Mr. Overton, please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Five yays, zero nays. This does pass. Ms. Powell, thank you so much. We're very excited. I believe we will have quorum, if not by the, if not after today or in a couple of weeks by the end of the month. So believe me, you have some very active members already appointed that really want to convene this. So you should be getting messages shortly after today. I'll let you know at the first meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And real quick, a procedural question for you, Mr. Overton. So I know that item number four is a duplicate paper. Is this one that we are planning to?
This is the most recent iteration of this. So I, my, the suggestion, I guess, would be to hold this one and then file the one that's on held.
Understood. So let's go ahead and read it in number four and then we'll make that motion.
Absolutely. 24C-5011, a communication from Council President Doug Shipman, reappointing Ms. Carly Swift to serve as a member of the Atlanta Commission on Women. This appointment is for a term of two years to begin retroactively on January 22, 2023 and expire on January 21, 2025.
Thank you. So I do believe that Ms. Swift, while not in attendance today, will be, as confirmed, for our next COC meeting. So we will hear from her then. So for now, we will, I will make a motion to hold this paper. Seconded by Councilmember Amos.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
Six yays, zero nays. This does pass. Next, we have item number five. Please sound that caption.
Item number five, 24C-5012, a communication with Councilmember Jason Winston of District 1, reappointing, I'm sorry, appointing Ms. Meredith Lilly to serve as a member of the Atlanta Commission on Women. This appointment is for a term of two years.
Thank you. I believe, Ms. Lilly, I believe you're in. There she is. Hi, Ms. Lilly.
Hey.
Good to see you. One first, thank you so much for being willing to take on this position. Please tell us a little bit about why you would like to serve.
All right, well, good afternoon, council. Thank you so much for having me today. I am Meredith Lilly. I am an attorney by training. I practiced criminal defense law for several years. I'm now working the federal space as a senior advisor. I've worked in this city for over a decade in volunteer positions such as NAACP, SCLC Women, and the list goes on and on. Joseph Lawrence Institute. I believe this is the perfect commission for me. Advocating for women is something that I love to do and advocating on issues such as mortality, maternal mortality, issues like unfair wages, issues like domestic violence. It's something very dear to me. And I do believe when women win, we all win. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I will, you want, oh, Meredith, real quick. We're gonna, we have to, we have to go through you. We have to, we have to celebrate your. I know you, I know how busy you are and that you have 20 million other things to get to. So I know, but I believe, Councilmember Winston.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for your willingness to serve on this commission and I move approval.
Thank you, councilman.
Second, I will, Andre, Councilmember Boone beat me to it. So a motion by Councilmember Winston, seconded by Councilmember Boone and very excited, well, we should, let me go ahead and say, let's open that vote.
The vote is open.
Six yays, zero nays. Very excited to have you on board.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much for this. All right, moving on to our regular agenda. We have our ordinances for first reading. Mr. Overton, will you go ahead and sound off item number six?
Chair Bakhtiari, there is one more communication.
Oh, that's right, we had a walk-in.
We had a walk-in and we also have item number 13 on held. She is also here.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and do, pull off item number 13 off of held and can we go ahead and read that in?
Absolutely. Item number 13, 24C-5003, a communication from Councilmember Jason Dozer of District 4, reappointing Ms. Loretta Craig to serve as a member of the Atlanta Commission on Women. This appointment is for a term of two years to begin retroactively on March 4, 2023 and expire on March 3, 2025.
Ms. Craig, thank you so much for being here and for being willing to put yourself up for this position. Please tell us a little bit about yourself.
All right, good morning, everyone. My name is Larisha Craig. I actually was voted in in '18, but I think I'm doing this again now because we have, we've got a new council member, Mr. Dozer.
Yep.
So I was able to serve on the council right before COVID and we got shut down. So I'm excited to get back to work. Currently, right now, I am working as an associate commercial broker at Kellernapp Real Estate. I have been doing plenty of community service and volunteer efforts. I have been doing plenty of community service and volunteer efforts. I work very closely with our MPU. I serve as the zoning and land use chair for MPUT. So I'm very familiar with the city and how it runs, and I'd like to continue my efforts.
Well, thank you very much. And yes, you're right, everything went awry before the pandemic. I'm happy to say that the majority of this board that has been appointed and the chair are very excited to get back to work, and I believe already have initiatives, so they are ready to pick back up again. So excited that you have been reappointed, and I will make a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Winston. Vote is now open.
Vote is closed.
Six yays, zero nays. Thank you, Mrs. Larisha Craig. Excited to have you on board. And, Mr. Overton, you want to go ahead and sound off that walk-in?
Sure.
Which I believe we all have in front of us. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So the walk-in item is a resolution by the Committee on Counsel, appointing the Atlanta Board of Education's nominee, Ms. Esche Collins, to the Board of Directors for the Atlanta Development Authority in Vest Atlanta for a term of four years, scheduled to begin on the date of approval of this resolution and for other purposes.
Thank you. I do not believe Ms. Collins is here, but at least she'll be attending a future meeting.
This item would be for referral to CDHS.
Okay. So does it require any actions from us now, or we just make a motion to refer to CDHS? Make a motion, go ahead and make a motion to refer to CDHS, seconded by Councilmember Faroki.
The vote is open.
All members, please vote. Thank you. Six yays, zero nays. This item has been referred. So now, I believe now we are okay to move on to our items for first reading.
All right. Item number six, 2401048, an ordinance by the Committee on Counsel to amend the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, Section 66-2, precinct boundary lines and polling places, by amending the 2017 precincts and polling place ordinance in Fulton County, Precinct 08L and 010C, due to the facility no longer being conducive and the facility no longer being available to accommodate and for other purposes.
Thank you. This is our first read, so no actions required. I do not believe we have any do refer to items that we need to read off, nothing that we need to come off of held. Is that correct?
Well, we do need to file.
We do need to file paper. So if you could please read off item number nine?
Item number nine, 23C-5043, a communication from Council President Doug Shipman reappointing Ms. Carly Swift to serve as a member of the Atlanta Commission on Women. This appointment is for a term of two years to begin retroactively on January 22, 2023, and expire on January 21, 2025.
Thank you. Colleagues, this is a duplicate paper, so we have the most recent one before us that we voted to hold earlier, so I'll make the motion to file this paper, seconded by Councilmember Amos. Vote is now open.
Vote is closed.
Six yays, zero nays. This paper is filed. I do believe, let me gather myself, I believe that concludes all other items, and we can move on to item number 14. Please read off that caption.
Item number 14, there is a substitute on the floor for this item.
Well, you need to go ahead and read the item in first.
Oh, do I? Oh, my fault. Sorry. 2401007, an ordinance by Councilmember Lilianna Bakhtiari codifying procedures governing the acceptance, review, and validation of petitions pursuant to populist-led referendum and for other purposes.
And I will motion to bring forth my substitute.
No, it's just. Yep.
The substitute that was submitted to Mr. Overton, we have that he has before him and that everyone else has received? Yes. So I motion to bring forth my substitute.
An ordinance by Councilmember Lilianna Bakhtiari, as substituted by the Committee on Counsel, to amend Chapter 66, Article 2 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to adopt additional procedures governing the petition and referendum process, which should not conflict the procedures prescribed by the Home Rule Act and for other purposes. Is there a second?
It doesn't seem I have a second, but I do believe that we have someone waiting to speak, so I'll go ahead and call on Councilmember Shook.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to bring forward a substitute for 2401007. Colleagues, you should all have it. It is unchanged from the version that I unsuccessfully tried to have introduced two weeks ago. So that's my motion.
Please. Okay. Okay, so. To explain to everyone the process going on here, there has been no second for my substitute, so that dies on the table. So Councilmember Shook has brought forth his substitute. Does that substitute have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Boone. Is there, do you want to? Councilmember Shook, did you still want to speak? Or? No, so go ahead and, Councilmember Faroki, please.
This question for law, can you shed light on the substitute, which has been around for a couple of weeks now? You've seen it. Does it wire exact match for signature verification? And if not, can you explain the process for? Maybe watch.
Good morning, Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta, Department of Law. The substitute brought forward by Councilmember Shook does not require what is termed "exact match." It specifically provides that there would be no OCR character recognition technology or anything such as that utilized in order to, quote, "match signatures." It does comply with the Home Rule Act's requirement that signatures be reviewed and provides for guidance regarding what would and would not constitute reasoning for a signature to be disqualified. It also provides for review of any potentially disqualified signature by two individuals, so it would require two persons to agree that the signature would be potentially disqualified. And thereafter, it provides for a cure process whereby persons whose signatures are recommended for disqualification would have an opportunity to come and assert that it was, in fact, their signatures on the petition and have those signature defects cured.
And, Ms. Robinson, could you also comment on whether or not, in your opinion, the substitute legislation is offered by Mr. Shook falls within the guidelines of Home Rule Act or any state law that may provide guardrails here?
Yes. Upon our review, it is our opinion that the Shook substitute does, in fact, comply with the Home Rule Act. The deadlines and timelines as stated in the legislation are all within the statutorily required deadlines and timelines from the Home Rule Act. It does provide that there would be review of signatures. It does provide that there would be a requirement that the exact number of signatures as calculated to have a successful petition would have to be achieved, and it does not violate any concerns regarding the constitutional prohibitions surrounding retroactive effectiveness of laws.
Okay. An additional clarifying, well, go ahead, Councilmember Shook.
No, I was just happy to hear any questions asked and answered. Otherwise, I will make a motion to approve as substituted.
And I believe that motion was already made and seconded. Okay. And my understanding is that this substitute were to go through, Ms. Robinson, this would be what would be utilized?
So upon approval and into law of this legislation, assuming that no verification process has begun prior to approval, it will provide the guidelines and the requirements for the verification process of the pending petition in assuming that the court were to authorize the verification to move forward.
Councilmember Faroki.
Just to be clear, just want to talk through the options the council has. Obviously, one is Councilmember Bakhtiari's paper wasn't supported forward largely on preemption concerns. It's Councilmember Shook's paper, which would establish a process that you just reflected on. A third option is to do nothing. If nothing is done and the verification process is given the green light by the 11th Circuit, what happens if there's nothing that council has put on the table?
In keeping with the charge of any person's exercising administrative or executive authority on behalf of the city to see that the laws are faithfully executed, a process will be employed in order to verify the petition. That process was published last fall by the, I believe, Clerk Emeritus, and that would be the process followed. It is in keeping the process as published, is in keeping with the Home Rule Act's requirements. It's just not a process that has been adopted by this council.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Then, is there any further discussion? Oh, then, yes, so bring forth the substitute first.
Vote is open.
So the motion, I'm sorry, the motion on the floor is to bring forth Councilmember Shook's substitute, so this is a vote on bringing forth that substitute. The vote is currently open, so colleagues, please vote.
Vote is closed.
All right, so we do have, we do have the substitute before us. So could you please read that substitute off again? With the new legislation, with the substitute attached? I'm sorry, the caption. I apologize.
An ordinance by Councilmember Lilianna Bakhtiari, as substituted by the Committee on Counsel, an ordinance to amend Chapter 66, Article 2 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to adopt additional procedures governing the petition and referendum process, which should not conflict with the procedures prescribed by the Home Rule Act and for other purposes.
Can we also ask that, is this an ordinance brought forth by Committee on Counsel and not me, since this is no longer?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's now an ordinance brought forth. Understood. Thank you. And just to ask a quick question, if I may, before moving on, before the vote on this piece, so just so that I better understand, the substitute I had for Ms. Robinson, it still had a constitutional error, correct? So the issue was around, well, that's actually not the substitute that's before us, so never mind. We have the legislation before us, so do I hear a motion? If we have no more discussion? Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Shook to move approval on substitute. Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Boone. Seeing no discussion? Four yays, two nays. This legislation is found favorable and passes. I believe this does conclude. Councilmember, Mr. Overton, I believe this concludes our legislative agenda, seeing no other comment, I have called adjourned.